I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, welcome to April 1st. This is an April Fool's Day, but here we are. It's County Commission, Shawnee County. My name is Kevin Cook. I serve as the Chair, representing District 2 as well. Joining me today is Commissioner Bill Rippon, representing District 1. Good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioner Aaron May is representing District 3. Good morning.
Good morning.
Madam Clerk, our first item.
First item is Item 2, Unfinished Business. Review of Health Order and Resolution Number 2021-20, adopting an in-part emergency order of our local health officer.
Commissioners, when we met on Monday, we had held this item over for further discussion today. This relates specifically as to any rules or regulations that we might have as to Shawnee County facilities or properties, and whether or not we would have any sort of masks or gathering requirements in regards to those facilities. And having had an opportunity to kind of review it and reflect on it and meet with the county councillor, is there any discussion from the commission?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
I think after talking with some department heads and county councillor, I think the best course of action is to continue the mask mandate for the Health Department and the jail, and make it an opt-out for other departments.
Okay. So...
And then, and then all of the other regulations concerning gathering sizes and things like that would become recommendations as well.
Okay. In turning to the county councillor, one question that I do have is if the county was to make it a recommendation on any other facility except for the Shawnee County Department of Corrections and the Shawnee County Health Department, what would the impact of that resolution be towards the courts who are a primary tenant of this facility?
Jim Crowell, Shawnee County Councillor, that would remove the requirement for the building, however, the courts could consider it an administrative order related to court operations that would apply to users of the courts, and that would be within their purview.
And I see Ladon Welch, present, as Court Administrator.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lee Welch, Court Administrator, 3rd Judicial District. The courts are bound by Supreme Court Administrative Order 123, which requires social distancing and mask-wearing at all times. So regardless of what the county chooses to do for the courthouse, the courts are still required and will continue to require masks in any court environment, whether that's court services in the basement level, the first floor. Actually, we have offices on every floor of the building, so it'll be back to that same issue we had when the courts reopened in June and the county was, we had that distinct separation between mask-wearing and non-mask-wearing. So my information from the Office of Judicial Administration is that those mitigation factors are not going to change anytime soon.
So applying what your statement, if a person is coming into the courthouse, they may not be required to wear a mask to enter the courthouse, but when they come to the first floor court service, they would need to put on a mask before they enter the court service's office?
Correct.
And if a person is not required to wear a mask riding up on the elevator, before they exit the elevator on the third floor, fourth floor, they would need to wear a mask there?
Correct.
And they may not be required to wear a mask in the hallway of the second floor, but they would have to wear one before they enter the district attorney's office or the court clerk's office?
Yes.
Okay. So just kind of walking through where the, and would there be signs posted letting people know where they would need to have those masks?
We have signs posted on every court door at the present time, and we can either revisit those signs, or, you know, I'm looking at some stand-up signs for the hallway because people aren't looking at the walls anymore. There's so many signs that say so many different things, they're just not paying attention to those. So we're looking at actually some three-dimensional signs that would stand in the hallways that would tell people they're required to wear masks.
And then, Jim, presently, we have a person who is taking temperature and asking some questions as people enter the facility. Would we still have that person if we are a recommendation only?
Yeah, this would, this will not change that contract presently. It's an ongoing contract.
Okay. And then, are there any questions for Ms. Welch? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, Jim, as it relates to the Shawnee County Event Center, the Stormont Vale Event Center, we have a contract with Spectra, and Spectra has their own national rules or regulations. How would that impact us?
Well, I'll defer to, this is Jim Crowell, I'll defer to Kellen on what his stated desire would be with regard to those rules. Obviously, he's going to follow whatever rules we give him, but I'll let him express his opinion on how that would interplay with his corporate partner.
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. Kellen Seitz, Spectra Venue Management, the Stormont Vale Event Center. So we take the county health order and recommendations and apply that to any of our physical property for the events and patrons of our facilities, and those patrons include event producers and promoters. So in the event that the mask mandate and health requirements become recommendations, they would be just that for patrons and event producers and promoters. However, for our staff, we will continue to operate under our Spectra reopening guideline plan, which is a corporate plan that still requires our staff in the facilities to wear masks, do daily temperature screenings, you know, encourage frequent hand washing and enhanced sanitization. But for the general public, they would not be required to wear a mask or go through any of the COVID mitigation practices at that time.
Kellen, walk through with me, again, just for the members watching and the public, as well as anybody who else in the room. If the Stormont Vale Event, Spectra, was to enter into an agreement with Darius Rucker that he would come to the Stormont Vale Event Center on April the 15th for a great concert with Darius Rucker at the Stormont Vale Event Center, that's a hint, you know, in the spirit of Bob Archer.
Yeah.
But who, what regulations are you going to apply to that sort of a venue?
Sure. There's, it's kind of a tricky question. There's two scenarios. If we go out and acquire that event, if we are at risk financially for that event, we set the mitigation practices and/or the regulations for those types of events. If that event is a rental and they are renting the space, they have some control over the autonomy of what regulations they want to put in place. So it's, it's a little bit of a balanced approach for things like the emergency services agreement, like we talked on, on Monday. The emergency services agreement allows, you know, Stormont Vale Health to set out their own guidelines and principles and what they want to do with that space. It's my understanding that they will continue to require mask use during the vaccination clinic, as well as do their COVID check-in procedures and any mitigation strategies at that point.
I might note, we don't have Darius Rucker booked for April the 15th, but that would be a great concert.
We're working on a few other things, so just hang tight.
Any questions for Kellen? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then, Jim, finally, we have a separate agreement regarding Mainor Conference Center. Would that same rules apply then?
Exactly. It would be the same scenario. I mean, typically, we have, what I mean is typically, the hotel will determine, they're managing that facility, so they're going to, they're going to manage that within their own corporate policies at that point. We wouldn't have any policies on top of it for that facility.
Final question before I open up to the Commissioners again. Jim, as it relates to our Shawnee County Parks and Recreation, if currently we have a rule that it's no more than 500 indoors, 1,000 outdoors for a gathering size, if we go to a recommendation only, and if Shawnee County Parks and Rec was to host an event or put on an event at Lake Shawnee that would attract, well Huff and Puff attracted 10,000 people. Things like the Tales on the Trails previously attracted 5,000 people. Would that then be just a recommendation to the Parks and Rec as to how many people they would host at the event or limit at the event, or would there be no requirements?
Well, it'd be a recommendation, there would be no requirements, but I did talk to Tim Laurent, I don't know if he's here. Basically, what he indicated to me is all of the events they have scheduled so far in the immediate future would fit within the current guidelines anyway. So whether, his conclusion to me was whether we kept the requirements or just made a recommendations, it's really not going to affect their operations anyway based upon what they have scheduled.
Based on those questions, are there any questions for the county councillor? Okay. There's been a motion made by Commissioner May to amend the current Resolution 2021-20 that the Shawnee County Department of Corrections would still be a mask-mandated facility, and the Shawnee County Health Department would continue to be a mask-mandated facility in that the gathering sizes and health order would still apply to those facilities. However, to all other county-owned facilities, there would not be a mask mandate, nor would there be a requirement regarding gathering sizes. The mask mandate and gathering sizes would be a recommendation only. Does that correctly reflect your motion, Commissioner May?
Sort of.
Okay.
So the gathering sizes and things, I don't think necessarily need to apply to the jail or the Health Department. They're not doing over 1,000 people at the Health Department. I think it just overcomplicates it to do that. So I mean, it's really, all the piece I'm thinking is the masks, and then everything else becomes a recommendation.
Okay.
Okay. I will second that.
All right.
What he just said.
At this time, before we vote, are there any members of the public or department heads that wish to address the commission on this item?
Teresa Fisher, Interim Director with the Health Department. I am advocating for the mask mandate to remain in effect for the Shawnee County Health Department. There are several reasons, but a couple I would point out is we are still doing our mobile vaccine clinics, and so with those individuals coming in, they of course are not vaccinated, so they're a vulnerable population that would be putting both our staff and our volunteers at risk. I do want to advocate for the staff, but also the volunteers. We are dependent upon volunteers to staff these clinics, and I want to make sure that our work environment is one that we can provide for them to feel safe in that environment. And I believe that mask, keeping the mask mandate will help fulfill that. So, thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brian Cole, Shawnee County Department of Corrections. I know I've removed my mask, but I am going to say that I appreciate this avenue of doing, that I will be the first person to tell you jails are not built for pandemics, that while a lot of jails and correction facilities have been listed as clusters, and we have too, and they remain at a very high percentage rate of positivity, I truly believe and support that masks have helped us at the jail. We've been down in the lows as a seven or eight percent, and I believe it is because of the masks and the, and our, the restricted protocols that we have. We, I will say you that we are starting to allow and start working with our volunteers to come back in under restrictive stuff. We have put a great deal of infrastructure renovations to allow more courts and stuff to go on, but we are starting to allow religious and more volunteers to come in. So we are starting to move with, as we see the numbers of something like this, but the physical plan of the jail, the lack of number of people that have volunteered for vaccines, and I will tell you that we have almost 80 to 100 inmates that want vaccines, we're going to be working with the Health Department regarding that and staff. We're going to continue to do what we need to do to get past this pandemic. I mean, we're all tired of it, but this is the right move for us to be able to stay within the mask. I mean, we have to for still yet to come, so, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Any other public comment?
Yes, thank you very much, Kathy Hilpak. I just have a question about that. Why is it that the jail and the Health Department have to have a mandate? Can't they make this decision on their own to continue to do that? It is the same thing that you're saying to the businesses. This is your choice. Why, why do they have to have you guys or a mandate to tell them what they believe they should do? I don't, I'm not understanding that.
Jim Crowell, County Councillor, would you be willing to weigh in why it would be to the advantage of Shawnee County to have a mandate as opposed to a recommendation from the County Commission regarding certain facilities?
I think part of it is a policy issue. I think it does put us in a stronger position legally for, to do that, and I'm not concerned about defending lawsuits from individuals who claim that they're aggrieved either from the jail or who are trying to access services in the Health Department. I think those are defendable and reasonable places to keep this in place. I think as a policy matter, it's probably better for that policy to come from the Board of County Commissioners than leaving it just up to the department heads in their, in their respective departments.
Any further discussion? There's been a motion made by Commissioner May, second by Commissioner Rippon. All in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Motion passes two to one. Commissioner Cook dissenting. Our next item.
Item 3, Consent Agenda.
Commissioners, there are a number of items A through H on the consent agenda this morning. Are there any questions, or is there a motion?
A motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Rippon, second by Commissioner May. All in favor say aye. All opposed, reflected it passes three to zero. Our next item.
Item 4, The Business. Item A, County Court Number 1, Consider All Voucher Payments.
Commissioners, today we have vouchers totaling $1,412,227.63. Couple highlights on that, under Building and Maintenance for JP Construction, for $22,700. That's for the deck at the Garden House at Lake Shawnee. Under General Expense, we've got Evergreen Solutions for $14,355. That is for the compensation study, and then also the interstate elevator, $212,968.80. That's for the final payment for the courthouse elevator modernization. So hopefully, that's the last we hear about the courthouse elevator, and I would move for approval.
Motion to approve by Commissioner May.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rippon. All in favor say aye. All opposed, reflected it passes three to zero. Our next item.
Item A2, Consider Correction Orders.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion for approval by Commissioner Cook, second by Commissioner Rippon. All in favor say aye. All opposed, reflected it passes three to zero. Our next item.
Item B, Solid Waste. Number 1, Consider Approval of Request to Award Bid to Elliot Equipment for the Purchase of a Container Delivery Truck in the Amount of $111,195, utilizing the Solid Waste Fund.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bill Sutton, Shawnee County Solid Waste. Last month or so, I came before the Commission requesting to go out for quotation for a container delivery truck. This was a change from my five-year capital improvement plan because I had a roll-off truck scheduled, but asked permission to switch those out. We got the bids back. Two vendors submitted a total of four bids, and it is our opinion that the best and most responsive bid was for Elliot Equipment with the total purchase price of $111,195. This will come from our solid waste budget, and which is 100% user fee funded, no tax paid, ours used. Standby for your questions, gentlemen.
Questions for Bill regarding this purchase?
I have none. I would move for approval.
Motion for approval by Commissioner Rippon.
Second.
Second by Commissioner May. All in favor say aye. All opposed, reflected it passes three to zero. Our next item.
Item B2, Consider Approval of Request to Award Bid to Truck Components Center for the Purchase of Four Rearload Trash Trucks in the Amount of $453,556, including trade-in allowance utilizing the Solid Waste Fund.
Bill Sutton, Shawnee County Solid Waste. Along the same lines, for, part of our five-year capital improvement plan, this year we requested four rearload trash trucks. Those are typically the orange trucks that everybody sees going up and down the road. Two vendors submitted a total of four bids. You can see those bids on the attachment. The best and most responsive bid, in our opinion, is also the low bidder for this, that'd be TSC or Truck Components Center, $453,556 with our trade-in allowances. And this will be coming from our operational budget, which is 100% user fee funded with no tax dollars used. Subject to your questions, gentlemen.
Questions for Bill regarding this item? Commissioner May?
Yeah, Bill, do these, do these trucks come outfitted, or do we have to paint them? Do we have to put more equipment on them?
It's all in the bid specs that we submit to them, so we specify what we want on these trucks, which includes the color paint. So pretty much, they get here, we slap some decals on them, license plate, and they're ready to go.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Other questions?
What's the longevity of one of these trucks?
These trucks, as you're probably aware, they have a rough service life, just because they're starting, stopping, crawling in now these alleys. Once they hit that five-year mark, that's when the trade-in allowance really starts to fall off. So that's why we instituted this five-year trade-in program. As well as the five-year mark is what our emissions warranty is for all the emission components on the vehicle. Those emission repairs are very costly, and if it occurs within that five-year window, we can get it under warranty, whereas if it's outside that five-year window, then we have to pay for it out of pocket, and thus could easily exceed tens of thousands of dollars for that vehicle.
Bill, the only question I had, I mean, we have three different vehicles, chassis that we're looking at, but the compactor, three of the bids have one compactor, the bid that we're looking at has a different type of compactor. Is there a issue, or are there any concerns with having this compactor since the other three bids have the other compactor?
That is a very good eye there, sir. We have about 23, 24 rearload trucks in our fleet right now, and we have, I think it's three different compactor bodies, so, and we have, we already have this body style, so it's not going to be a change.
Okay. That was just the one that caught my eye, is the three of the bids have one type of compactor, and the bid that we're looking at has the other type of compactor. So, all right. Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I commend you for catching that, though. It is also $70,000 less than the next closest bid, too, so...
I was waiting for the April Fool's.
No.
I would second.
Motion made by Commissioner May, second by Commissioner Rippon. All in favor say aye. All opposed, reflected it passes three to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Our next item.
Item C, Election Office. Number 1, Consider Approval of Request to Solicit Bids for Election Equipment Delivery Services for the 2021 through 2024 election cycle.
Good morning, Commissioners. Andrew Howell, Shawnee County Election Office. We would like to, like permission to go ahead and put bids together for delivery of the election equipment. You know, every year we do at least two elections, primary and general election, and those pieces of equipment have to be delivered to each of the almost 100 polling places across the county. So we try to bid that out. Our current bid has already come and gone for the last, I believe, couple of years that we've used, so it's time to bid that out again. If you have any questions on that, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
Any questions for Andrew regarding the delivery of the equipment?
Have none.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion for approval by Commissioner Cook, second by Commissioner Rippon. All in favor say aye. All opposed, reflected it passes three to zero. Our next item.
Item C2, Consider Approval of Request to Solicit Bids for Election Ballot Printing Services for the 2021 through 2024 election cycle.
Andrew Howell, Shawnee County Election Commissioner. Again, what we're attempting to do here, you know, we have a little over 400 different ballot styles that are used in some of these elections and a little bit less in others, but again, we need twice a year to have the ability to have those ballots printed. We find that most of the time, especially in a major election, it's actually cheaper to have them printed by another company, but the specs are pretty complex, so we need to get that out there, we need to get some bids in because we do have, expect at least a potential for a primary in August of this year, and we'll need to have those ready to go three months prior to that, so we're getting fairly close. If you've got any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those. Just so you know, we have had these reviewed by the county councillor as well as Betty.
Andrew, this is considered our off-year, quote-unquote, for elections. We do not have a presidential, we don't have any congressional or senate, we do not have any statewide offices. Typically, this election consists of townships, school boards, or the city mayoral race or city council race. So are there anything that we're expecting to be unusual at this time? I mean, I know that April's a little bit premature, but is there anything unexpected or that you have on the radar?
Probably the one thing about, that occurs every four years that doesn't get a lot of conversation is the fact that we have drainage districts, Shugmanunga, there's, I think there's three or four others that we have at about 25 different polling places, and those are technically a separate election run under separate rules. So it's a little more complex in that regard. Every four years, we have those elections that occur, so there's going to be a little bit of additional work getting prepared for those. We use the same polling locations, but technically, they're a separate election with a separate set of people involved. So there's that. And additionally, it's really hard to project for the primary, because it takes four candidates to cause the primary to occur for the mayor's race or for city council. So I would expect that we might have a primary election in parts of the city, or if we have school board races where four people actually run in the primary, then we could see that elsewhere. But typically, it doesn't run county-wide because we don't usually have that many people file for each of those, typically, school board races on the county. But those are kind of the complexities. Additionally, of course, we're, we're doing a lot of work in the office. As you know, I think we ended up with a number of retirements last year, so there's a lot of internal training, catching up from things that we just couldn't do during election, presidential election. So there's still quite a bit going on in the office, but those are probably the, just training, hiring new people, getting kind of back into managing some of the day-to-day details a little more effectively, just due to the nature of the pandemic and running the election, catching up on that, and then getting ready for that, for the election later this year as it relates to those drainage district elections.
But at this point, you're not seeing anything from the legislature regarding any constitutional amendments or any statewide ballot issues?
Not for, not for this year. We haven't, you know, and there's always the potential, I guess, for someone later in the year to request a mail ballot election, that hasn't, but I haven't seen anything yet.
Okay. Any questions for Andrew?
Yeah, Andrew, I see this is, this is a four-year contract that we're soliciting, so I know that other communities, there are some that have gone to more of an on-demand ballot printing. Is that something that you envision us ever moving to? And if so, would doing this for four years inhibit your ability to do such things?
I think that we will encourage anybody who's a bidder to consider leaving some flexibility in the way they build those numbers out. I think that's important. If you see a significant cost variance, maybe in paper, or significant cost variance in gasoline, or fuel, or diesel, I will encourage bidders to at least give themselves a little bit of flexibility in those areas. So I think that's probably something we'll look at going forward, but I think we've got enough ability to address those things in here to be okay, at least for the next four years.
Okay. Appreciate that.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner May.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rippon. All in favor say aye. All opposed, reflected it passes three to zero. Thank you, Andrew.
Thanks.
Our next item.
Item 5, Administrative Communications.
This is an opportunity for any department head or member of the public to address the commission on any item.
Hey, good morning, Commissioners. Bill Sutton, Shawnee County Solid Waste. I have three announcements today, hopefully I remember them all. I'll start off with the easy one first. I'd like to introduce the commission to my new Deputy Director. His name's Steve Cologne. I came on board this week, and I am definitely happy to have him on board.
Great. Welcome, Steve.
Thank you, sir.
You want to tell us a little bit about yourself and where you come from? You want to tell us a little bit about yourself and where you come from?
I have a long line of experience in linehaul, distribution, and operations, and also a little bit of Medicaid, and happy to join this team and share what I've learned and help us become even more profitable.
Very good. Thank you.
All right.
Second item, I'm happy to announce that the First Congressional Church down there at 17th and Collins came on board with a glass recycling program, and we was able to put one of our purple glass containers there. I believe the official address is 1701 Southwest Collins Street, it's in their parking lot. I would ask that anybody, that if anybody does use it, that they obviously, you know, clean it up after themselves and try not to make a mess in that parking lot since the church so graciously allowed us to do that. And then, lastly, this will be the first Saturday of the month out there at Household Hazardous Waste, so it is our Saturday collection event. So from nine until noon this Saturday, it's open for all residents to drop off their household hazardous waste, along with any other electronic waste that they might have, and it's all free for all the residents. The only exception is the cathode ray tubes, those big TVs, and there is a fee associated with those. No paint sales this Saturday, just to eliminate any of the clutter and confusion out there. The physical address is 131 Northeast 46th Street, and for more information, they can always call 286-4381. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Bill. Any other administrative communications this morning? Commissioner Rippon?
I volunteered today, yesterday, to help out with setting up a Twilight's at Tulip, or Tulips at Twilight at Old Prairie Town. It's good to get outside and had pretty decent weather. It's nice, so, but it's, it's a, it's a good event. It's coming up soon, and I'm sure we'll hear more about it from Parks Direct as we get a little closer.
Very good. Commissioner Mays?
Can't wait. I think that's exciting. I, nothing for me, though.
I had one other.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. I kind of.
I got so excited about Tulips at Twilight.
I, I understand. I've been working a little on a, on a, a new trail, and this would take advantage of the, of the dyke system, our levee system. It would go from roughly where the Great Overland Station is out to the, the new weir, or not the new weir, but the, the enhanced weir, and I've been working with Wildlife and Parks, I've been working with the City of Topeka, gee, trying to think who else, but anyway, there's, there's a, a large group of it. It's a subcommittee of the River Authority, and we've, we're getting close to establishing a trail up there. We'll probably be coming to work for, before this board, probably in the next month or so, with a memorandum of understanding defining who would be responsible for maintenance and who would be responsible for upkeep and benches, signs, all that kind of stuff. So anyway, I just wanted to let everybody know that we're working on this trail right now, and we're looking forward to getting that up and running.
Very good. Thank you for your work on that.
Thank you.
Nothing else? I don't have anything else, so, April Fool's Day, if you do play on a prank, make sure it's safe and everybody can enjoy it. Our next item.
Item six, executive session.
There's no need for an executive session today. We are adjourned.